Time being 7:05, I call the Hastings City Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and let the role reflect that we do have a couple members absent tonight. Councilmember House is absent, and Councilmember Lawrence. And we have a quarter. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Pembel, please start.
Whereas parks and recreation are intricate part of the community throughout this country, including the city of Hastings, and...
Whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and...
Whereas parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports and hiking trails and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and...
Whereas parks and recreation staff members maintain nearly thirty miles of trails and thirty-seven parks for our community, along with the Hastings Civic Center, Hastings Family Aquatic Center, fields, courts, and playgrounds, and...
Whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as youth and adult athletic leagues, provide opportunities to engage with others in the community, and...
Whereas parks and rec provide numerous entertainment opportunities to take advantage of our natural amenities and support tourism through the use of the Levy Park and other parks, and...
Whereas parks and recreation take care of the trees in our city and work to ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and...
Whereas each July, the city celebrates National Parks and Recreation Month with a party in the park, which will be held this year on July 30th at Levy Park, and...
Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and...
Whereas the city of Hastings recognizes the benefits derived from parks, recreation resources, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Mary Fassbender, Mayor and City of Hastings hereby declare the month of July 24th as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Hastings.
Thank you, council. And we do appreciate all of our parks in our community, so thanks to the Parks Department. Okay, council members, are there any corrections to the June 17 meeting? Comments from the audience? Anyone in the audience wishes to make a comment to the council? I see no one, no one on Zoom. All right, council items to be considered, council members, are there any items to be considered? Okay, consent agenda, council would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, your honor...
Councilmember Fox, with Councilmember Pembel as a second. Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under awarding of contracts, we have a public hearing for Second Street Depot to amend their sidewalk cafe. And for this item, we have an introduction by our Assistant City Administrator Kelly Murtaugh, followed by the public hearing and a potential action by the city council. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight before you is an amended application for a sidewalk cafe for Second Street Depot Bar &amp; Grill. They've had a sidewalk cafe in the past, but have changed some of the materials that they're using and the layout. The layout does meet ADA requirements and will be inspected upon installation, and they will also have a liquor license amendment along with this application. So I can certainly take any questions that you might have, or we can go right to the public hearing.
Great, I think council will do the public hearing first, and then after that we'll have a discussion. I open the hearing at this time. No one in the audience to speak to us, and no one on Zoom. At this time, I open the public hearing and open discussion for council. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, your honor. My only question is, it's not really a question, more of a request. So in the drawing of what their parklet will look like, or sidewalk cafe, excuse me, so sorry, it does bump out with the bump out movement of the sidewalk. My only request is that when we do the inspection, we make sure that there's not too much of the sidewalk covered on Tyler Street, and it's kind of within the parameters of how it looks on Second Street, just to ensure the ADA compliance are on the side.
Got it.
And it looks like it will be that way. That's just my request for diligence in the inspection.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox, Councilmember Pembel.
Question I have, as the drawing that I saw, what's the numbers difference from what they currently have been using?
That's a great question. I'm not sure that I can answer that. This appears to be fewer tables than they've had in the past, just because the layout is a little different, and the materials and construction are a little bit different, and to ensure ADA compliance. So I believe that there are fewer tables than what they've had in the past, but the specific number I could get you, but I don't have it on.
No, that's fine. I just, I'm assuming in order to meet the requirement, there are fewer tables or fewer seats, and it's fine with me. I think that's what I will agree with Councilmember Fox, that we have to be careful about the Tyler Street side to make sure that that's clear and accessible.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Councilmember Leifeld.
Kind of pitting back being on my councilmembers here, in the drawing, the three large squares in the bump out, those are the planters, okay? It shows them coming into one of the planters, so that does raise a question for me about ADA compliance. And then the picture on the outside, it says to Fourth. Is that the sidewalk, or is that the street where they've got the X's and the lines? That's the sidewalk. That's the sidewalk? Okay.
Yes, councilmember, where the hash marks are...
Yeah.
Is where the cobblestone, the cobblestone is on there. So that's passage.
Right, I just was confused when I saw the bump out with the three planters, but if the cobblestone goes around the planters and has plenty of space, then fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Leifeld, Councilmember Fox.
Your honor, I would make a motion to accept the amendment from the Second Street Depot Bar &amp; Grill for their setup cafe.
Set up that, your honor. And Councilmember Leifeld, seconded. No discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails, too. Tonight, we, under awarding contracts, we also have Highway 55 Small Area Plan, and for this item, we will have an introduction by our Community Development Director, John Kinsler. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers. Before you was an action to approve signature of a contract for the Highway 55 Small Area Plan. I'll go into a little bit of background and detail as to what we're trying to do and why this is before you tonight. The area that we have on the west end of the city, along Highway 55 from about First Street down to 15th Street, is an area in which the development could be a number of different things. It has commercial elements to it, it has residential elements to it, and it have density elements to it itself. Our comprehensive plan didn't really look in great detail to this area, and we want to ensure that the growth of this area is reflective of a couple things. Number one, it reflects a market demand of what's out there and what the capacity could be. We're in a situation right now in which it's very important for the city to ensure that development has the best impact on taxes and the least impact on services. And one of the things that's going to be interesting about this development is the analysis from a market standpoint, so that we can look at different market scenarios to look at what could the market bear, but also what would the tax capacity of these items be for future services? It's a situation here where we often get asked on what we're desiring to see as we grow into the development, as people come forward for annexation requests. This would provide us a tool in order to answer that question, and for us to be able to proactively guide that instead of getting what might come down the road. We have a special power with our annexation that we can compel certain items that otherwise we couldn't if it's within the city limits, so important on that measure as well. What we've done at this point, we put together a request and proposal, and we have sent that out to a number of different individuals, that we had six responses back, we've given three people, and we do have the proposal before you tonight from HKGI, who are recommending to sign the contract. The contract itself is a $50,000 contract, it was budgeted within this year's budget, and so it does meet the requirements of that. And so we're asking tonight for you to take action on that, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, your honor. John, I just want to just say out loud for people who are listening, that staff has been coached by the landowners. This comes up a lot on council. I feel like I get this question probably monthly, and again, this isn't the city going out to a landowner trying to annex part of the township, it is the other way around, the landowner is interested in selling their property. So I just want that said, I think this looks great. Do we need a vote on this? I would authorize a signature for the professional service agreement of HKGI for the Highway 55 Small Area Plan.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Leifeld, Councilmember Fox.
I'll second that comment.
Sure.
I really appreciate the strategy. As a longtime member of HEDRA now, it's really important that we get to proactively guide development, especially to Councilmember Leifeld's point, when the process is such that we don't get to just go and develop what we want to. I get this question very frequently, and we are at the whim of developers and of landowners, right? So, and whim is generous, but you know what I mean. So I'm really grateful to expose the process a little bit, but also have a hand in guiding what that development could look like, so it is strategic. So thank you.
And that's first and a second with discussion. All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails, too. Thank you, John. Also, under awarding of contracts, that 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, and we have an introduction tonight by our city engineer, Cody Madison. Welcome, Cody.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tonight before you is a resolution to award a contract for our 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitations. We received two bids for this project on Friday, June 21st. The low bid came from Musson Brothers, and that was for $238,675. What this project generally entails is the lining of sanitary sewer mains and some private sanitary sewer services on Lewis Lane that are experiencing some real heavy root intrusion. It also includes the lining of sanitary sewer manholes down in First Street that are susceptible to inflight infiltration during times of flooding, so timely, we're experiencing that. So this project would combat that, so we're not getting undesired inflight into our sanitary sewer system. The city has worked with Musson Brothers on a number of projects in the past, and just recently in 2023, to our satisfaction, so they're a trustworthy contractor. The project had a total budget committed from the Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Fund of $200,000. We also secured $95,000 of grant funding from Metropolitan Council, both for the public and private portions of the project, so that will assist in extending that budget to almost $300,000. So with that, the project and the bid coming in within our budget, staff is recommending the council move forward with adopting the attached resolution, awarding the contract to Musson Brothers, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Cody. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, your honor. Cody, could you give us briefly, so this past week, some of the council and the mayor and myself were at a Minnesota cities conference, and I got to listen to the city of St. Louis Park talk about a horrible situation that they had in 2022.
Twice.
Twice, where their sewer main broke. So as people see this, and obviously we're dealing with other things right now within the city, right? But we have to take care of the infrastructure and the things that we have, and we have to continue to do that. Could you tell us what this does, this lining?
Yes, I think I can relate it to the St. Louis Park situation. I actually lived two blocks away from where that was impacted. I was not in the impact, and it was a year after I moved, so I was lucky. But I think what they had there was a water main break...
That should start with this.
...that then infiltrated into the sewer. So had that sewer main been lined, it might have been a little bit more resilient to what happened. So you're always better off with newer infrastructure, newer pipes, lined pipes. So, yeah, relating it to that concern, so on Lewis Lane, for example, we've got really mature trees near the golf course, those roots are growing in through the pipes, that old clay sewer is compromised. When groundwater and rain enter, it comes into that sanitary sewer system, and like what St. Louis Park would have had, is their plant downtown gets overwhelmed. It's treating essentially clear water that we don't need to be treating down in our plant, so it's very wasteful of resources. So what this project will do as far as those main pipes go is put a trenchless liner in without the need to rip up Lewis Lane, and same thing with the sanitary sewer services, essentially, and as good as new pipe without the need to excavate. And then those manholes down in First Street, similar technology, but we're essentially going to coat the whole thing, so it has no joints. When the river is as high as it is now, instead of that river water pushing into our manholes and overwhelming the system, it's going to be able to hold that back much better. So does that answer your question?
It does, Cody, I really appreciate that, and I think people listening, it's just when we look at the financial impact, right, being able to put it into something we all understand.
Yep.
So I appreciate the time and that, and I would make a motion to award the contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
You have a first, and we have a second by Councilmember Verachov. Open discussion, councilmember number one.
Question I have, too, is, okay, how long will this take once they get started? Is this going to be a week? Is this going to be longer than that? And what's the age of the pipe that they're really lining? How old is that?
Yeah, so the sanitary sewer mains on Lewis Lane, I want to say are from the 60s, roughly. I'd have to check exact age of the homes, but I'm going to say that vintage. And then how long the actual work is going to take, I would say a matter of weeks, not months. So it's not going to be a real, once the crew arrives, it's not going to take very long, and to be eligible for reimbursement from the grant has to happen in 2024. So with this award, the contractor is going to be given right up until the end of the year to get all the work done.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Okay, we have first and a second, discussion's over, and I would accept, or, sorry, all those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails, as well. Cody, thank you so much. Another awarding of contract is the independent financial audit for the years 2024 to 2026, and this item, we will have an introduction by our city administrator, Dan Maitichah. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you may recall, just a couple weeks ago, our last meeting, we had a representative from Burton KTV here presenting our 2023 audit. That was the final year of our current agreement with them. I think it was a three-year agreement. We're at the position with that being the final year, either going out for bids and finding a new auditor, or potentially the same, but potentially a new auditor, or our recommendation is to do a three-year extension with Burton KTV. We've been with them for the past seven years, arguably maybe time to look for a fresh set of eyes, but staff's recommendation is based off of, right now, over the past couple of months, we are in the process of completely new accounting software. Just simply with some of the growing pains with that, we think that there's value in having some consistency, familiarity with our accounting and our books before and after. So that's our recommendation to continue with Burton KTV, three years, the prices are in line with what prior annual increases have been, as well as with the industry. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thanks, Dan. Councilmember Pembel.
The thought I would have is, after seven years, I think it's a good idea that maybe you look at a different accounting firm, but also with the discussion or the comment that you made about the software change out this year, maybe it's needed to continue, but I would strongly urge that if the council proceeds ahead with this three-year contract, that that brings us to 10, and we will change at that time. I think that's important. And with that point, I will make a motion to accept or sign on this contract for another three years with this accounting firm. Thank you.
Councilmember Pembel, in a second with Councilmember Leifeld, Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, I agree completely with Councilmember Pembel's comment and our city administrators' comments as well. My day job is in the nonprofit realm, so I'm very familiar with audits, and I just, I think that that was a really good point to raise. Dan and I had talked about that as well. And so I just want to be clear here, so if for some reason we decided that we didn't want to go through, do we have an opportunity to come out of the three-year contract, or no? This is three years, we signed this, we're with them until year 10?
Dan?
Do you have a sense? Sorry.
I can see for any questions.
And then I threw you a curveball, but I should say that this is not, I fully support this because of the conversation that we had, and then because of council, excuse me, Councilmember Pembel's comments as well, but I do think that after 10 years, I do think that there's a good time for someone.
I'm going to defer to attorney later on that.
Thank you.
Your honor, members of the council, typically in a professional services contract, if the city chose to terminate, there would be a notice period, and then you would pay for the services performed, and then you can terminate the contract. So as long as you pay for the services that they perform at the time, typically they'll let you out of the contract, and I hope you take that term.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov, and thank you, attorney. Councilmember Leifeld.
And note that we're already halfway through 2024. So, yeah, so if we were going to make a change, so thank you, your honor.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails, as well. Under administration, it is the first meeting in July, so we will get an update from our city administrator on our feedbacks.
Thank you. And I'm going to apologize in advance because I highlighted nearly every sentence in my bill, so I'm going to read most of this to you. Just hitting on several topics that have been ongoing over the past month and looking ahead a bit to the future. Recent, a couple weeks ago, a lot of discussion about the feasibility study we did last fall, and where do we go from here? Just want to be clear that Public Works Department has begun identifying several potential sites for water treatment plants two and three, that's the central and the west locations. There is a strong preference to avoid residential neighborhoods, but they do need to be vetted against engineering criteria, such as proximity to water and sewer infrastructure, proximity to wells, adequately sized water mains, road access, locations within water pressure zones. Then they could be modeled for feasibility as well as reviewed for cost estimates. That works underway right now, and expect that we will be bringing options for discussion at city council in August. Other piece to talk about a little bit, and I think some of this is proudly repeated from a last update, we didn't get state funding, nobody got state funding, so no assistance there. We do continue to seek assistance, we've got a couple of applications out there for funding, which I'll get to in a second. But the other piece is, we fully expected that seeking state funding was not going to be a one-time thing. We've talked about, hey, this is phased in, three plants over three years, it will be back for the next phase, so we're still expecting to be engaged with our state officials on seeking funding, assistance from the state. Along those lines, coincidentally, we're meeting tomorrow with our lobbyists to discuss maintaining those state relationships, thoughts for potential funding in the 2025 legislative session, as well as other funding support, such as federal requests that we have. Mentioning that federal request, it is, depending on who you talk to, it is either called congressionally-directed spending or community project funding, colloquially, it might be called an earmark. But we submitted earlier this year for $10.3 million, which is 50% half of the expected first phase of the project. Want to be very clear upfront, that is much higher than is typically funded through this process, but if you don't ask, you're not going to get. So we put in that request. I think it was well received. We had good conversations with staff of Congresswoman Crank, as well as good feedback from Senator Kovichar and Smith's staff. All three have advanced it to their respective appropriations committees. It's a far cry from being approved, but it's the first step, which is good. We've been told that there will not be a decision until November, unless we suddenly were off the list, that could come sooner, but there will not be an affirmative decision until November and possibly into 2025. So it may take some coordinating on how do we proceed with the project in early '25 if some of the funding hopefully is coming as we're moving ahead. The other part that I'd point out is, I think I mentioned, it is higher than is typically funded through congressional spending. Other application that we have out there, I know we've talked about this in the past, is the state's drinking water revolving fund, but we submitted all three phases, plants one, two, and three, for the project priority list, which is sort of the first step in the state funding, of this particular state funding. The second step is called the intended use plan, so it's intended to be, here's a project that is much more ready to go. It's not just trying to get it on the list, but this is a project that's ripe and moving in the next year. We submitted for both plants one and two, and basically the reasoning behind that was everything takes so damn long. So if we submit in May, April, May, whenever the application was, that we hear in September, and then the process for getting the paperwork takes us into the next year, and then we can start with contracts, we didn't want to find that, hey, we're looking at plant one, and now we've already missed a deadline to start moving on plant two. So that's why we submitted both of those. The key piece, I think, with that application is there is an emerging contaminants grant that would, at present, pay up to 50% of the project cost capped at $3 million. So we're well over that, the 50%, but we would certainly be aiming at $3 million. And the key part to it is, we actually applied for this as plant one, and a second application for plant two. So it's conceivable that both of those could get funded at $3 million each, so $6 million towards our total. We should hear about that September, October, so that number actually could play into some of our logic planning, but we'll see how that comes out. The other piece I need to note, as you guys know, we've had a couple budget workshops last month, in June, at present, we are looking at a water rate increase of probably in the range of 35% to 40%, and this is the first of several rate increases. If we do a plant a year for three years, here's the first year, and then depending on where we're at with funding, we'll have to come back with another substantial increase the following year. If we get no... If we get no funding from outside, we would be looking at rates doubling in two years and tripling in four years. This is not small. This is why we've been calling it a budget buster, completely unfair and a burden that our residents and businesses can't shoulder alone. That's the reason that we're there, trying to get grants and state assistance, federal assistance, is we know it's just an awful expense. Other piece that should note coming out of those workshops, City Council, it's you guys, I guess for this, I'm presenting to TV land out there. City Council agreed to delay the start of the first treatment plant. We have been talking about, we're shovel-ready, we can go to bid September 2024. The reality of that is, we will be raising rates this, now, tonight, in order to get ahead of that schedule. So causing, delaying that project to go out to bid early in '25, say February, allows us to hear about some of those grants. Maybe we can reduce some of that rate increase. It also, I think, more importantly, gives us more time to communicate and let our residents know, here's what's coming, here's why it's coming, the first of the year, instead of just suddenly hearing at the start of summer. So it's really a bit of a nod to that transparency. The last piece I want to talk about, because I know it's something that came up with a number of questions in the auditorium meeting that we had in early May, as well as follow-up questions about three M. There's a state settlement, should NIB be paying for this? I believe the answer is yes, but recognize, it's not up to me. The state's co-trustees, who are the Pollution Control Agency and the DNR, they have stated that a direct connection to one of the disposal sites north of here should be required, and they've excluded Hastings from the settlement agreement based on that. Disagree with that interpretation, but certainly respect our relationship and working with these agencies. And case in point, over the last year and a half, we've had a series of environmental investigations led by the Pollution Control Agency on our behalf. So that's important because, just trust me, it's important, I'll get to it in a second. The other piece, as I look at my highlighted notes, I stray sometimes. Although, very much believe that a direct connection is not required for the settlement agreement, there is also a prior consent order, which is a judgment that does require a direct connection to one of the disposal sites. And where this becomes important is, earlier this spring, the co-trustees recognized and acknowledged that the settlement funds will run out based off of the currently proposed projects in East Metro. So if they run out and there's still project needs, they see the prior consent order as a backup. But if it has a connection requirement, we don't want to suddenly find that we missed having that requirement if we're trying to step in line for funding under that backup plan. So the connection is important. The other piece that I mentioned was, the PCA has helped us with some environmental studies and believe that there has been some evidence from those studies that at least well number five is connected to, has that direct connection to three M's disposal site across in Cottage Grove. Send a correspondence to the co-trustees, saying, you said there needed to be a connection, connection's been found. What do we need to do now in order to get at least well five included in the settlement? And continue with environmental investigations to see what can be found about the other wells. But knowing that the timeline we have, do not see any reason or value in continuing delay if we know that there's a connection now. Requested that meeting in the next few weeks. Have not gotten a response yet. Don't know what their sentiments are going to be around, hey, we agree, you've got a connection, or if they're going to say, we think that you need more evidence. But I think we're in good position right now with that sense. A lot of information there, but with that, I can certainly take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I need to skip councilmember Leifeld.
Dan, in our previous meeting, we discussed, and it made me feel a lot better as a homeowner, that this is the water bill. So as you look at your bill, homeowners, renters, take a look at your bill, you'll see your water totals, your sewer totals, and your stormwater totals. So when you're calculating how much your bill is going to change, it's not the total bill. I felt much better after we had that clarification. So, and I know we say that, water bill, but to me, it's all one bill, right? So as you're looking at your bill and you want to calculate this so you can plan for next year, just keep that in mind, okay? Thanks. Appreciate it. That was a lot of great information.
Thanks, councilmember. Great, great point. We certainly, with the PFAS, with the water rates, with the budget overall, we really tried to communicate and make sure that information's understood out there as we proceed. As we get closer to actually seeing what projected rates might be, we certainly include clarifications, just the water side.
I would just like to applaud staff because they have been working so very, 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 very hard on this for our community. And we're moving down the right road, we hope. And with that connection, we're hopeful and it could help a lot. So more to come, but know that our staff is fighting for this community and safe water drinking. Councilmembers, any announcements? Councilmember Pambol?
It's not an announcement. I have a question moving forward. With high water, I'm receiving phone calls about trains being stopped longer than a short time at the crossing on Second Street. Now, yes, hopefully with water receding, this won't continue much longer, but is there a better number for people to contact than the Minneapolis number for CP Rail, which has now been merged with the Kansas City Southern? And so really, they're getting, those phones are being redirected to Kansas City for answers. And it's like, I think there has to be a better way to get this information across that, okay, here, the train's been here a while, it needs to move. Is there any place that constituents can, you know, touch base with? We went through that with the, when it turned into the Canadian Pacific, but then it was easy to make those phone calls to downtown Minneapolis and say, what are you doing? But now it's Kansas City, and they're being pushed along and not getting responses. Just throwing that out there so people are aware.
Couple things, councilmember. One, a couple of weeks ago, as we were preparing for flood conditions, we reached out proactively to CPs and reminded them, hey, as floods close roads, can't have trains parked here. Unfortunately, it's more of a request. We don't have jurisdiction to enforce anything. But we did make that contact a couple of weeks ago. When we learned this morning that a train had been parked for over an hour, as soon as we learned about it, we contacted CPs. That might have been clear, but we contacted as soon as we learned of it. My understanding, and I don't know the specific details, but there was some sort of lighting malfunction, so they were not able to cross the bridge. There is that they were parked, unfortunately has an impact on neighbors when it's parked there and you're wanting to go to work. But we did, in talking with them and in that explanation, also reinforced, hey, this has an impact. We really need to make sure that we keep roads open. I can look, I know that there is a customer service number, so to speak, I can look that up, but I, from prior experience, I'm pretty certain it's direct to Kansas City. So it's not getting forwarded down there, but it's not a local number, but can certainly make sure that's available for that neighbor there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank councilmember Pambol and thank Dan as well for listening to our residents, to our constituents. I too woke up this morning to quite a few videos of my neighbors and constituents that have been sitting at the railroad for over an hour this morning, trying to get to work early on a Monday morning of a holiday week. And so I empathize with that. I was very pleased to be able to call on Dan and know that the city was going to reach out, do what they could, get our residents the answers that they needed right away. So I'm thankful for you for representing those folks, to bringing those concerns here. I've been talking with folks and texting with them all day. And, you know, I'm, councilmember Fox and I were talking about this just before the meeting, I'm somebody that likes to write my to-do list and write my tasks and check them off and have them done neatly. And it pains me that this is not necessarily a perfectly tidy and neat issue. As Dan had said, this is not something necessarily that the city has jurisdiction over. We are not in charge of that train. However, when we know that it is having a negative impact on our residents' lives in terms of public safety, in terms of getting to work, we do want to know about it. So I'm thankful that our residents brought those concerns up. I'm thankful to you, councilman, for doing that. And I'm incredibly thankful to the city for having such an open mind and an open door policy in being able to hear these comments and also be willing to try and do what we can to help our residents. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Verachov. All right, city offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. Firework safety, which there are always a lot of questions around this time of year, so I'm just going to go through these quickly. Stay safe this summer, know the difference between legal and illegal. Ground displays, fountains, and sparklers are legal and are permitted between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. only. Fireworks that go airborne or explode are illegal. These include firecrackers, bottle rockets, and roman candles, to name a few. Remember that fireworks can be loud and create a noise disturbance for neighbors, pets, and people with PTSD. Please respect your neighbors and neighborhood. Residents should call 911 to report illegal fireworks. Those who wish to remain anonymous can text the word HASTINGS in capital letters to TIP However, this is not monitored 24/7. Summer rec programs at Levy Park, Thursday, July 11th. Music in the park with Cocktail Combo, classics with a twist, supported by Ruth and George Doffing Charitable Fund. Friday, July 12th, movies in the park with Trolls Band Together, sponsored by Arden Mills. Please bring a non-perishable food item. Rec Art and Police is Wednesday, July 10th, at Pioneer Park with finger paint, print animals, and obstacle course, recommended for elementary and middle schoolers, supported by SC Toys, Country Financial, Hastings Lions Club, Hastings Family Service, Community Ed, and Hastings Prescott Arts Council. Maker's Way Alley Market will be in the Levy Park on July, Thursday, July 11th. Support area makers and artisans within our historic downtown and riverfront park by shopping at the market. Meetings, Monday, July 8th, 7:00 p.m., there is a public safety committee meeting. 7:00 p.m. also on Monday is a planning commission meeting. Wednesday, July 10th, 6:00 p.m., Arts and Culture Commission. Monday, July 15th, council, we have a 5:30 workshop, and that is discussing our community survey with a 7:00 p.m. council meeting. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Councilmember Pambol. And second, no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. We are adjourned.